Okay, well, good evening everybody, for those who have not greeted yet and welcome. Unfortunately tonight you stuck with me. I got a late call up to stand in for Pastor David. He's really, really not feeling well, his voice is almost non-existent. So I hope he spends some time in bed this afternoon, get some rest. Do you need to...
Just a little...
Is it really necessary to record this? I don't have time to prepare for this. Then, just as we, before we start, Louis phoned earlier to let us know that Lily Bed is very... And asked that we just pray for Lily Bed as well. So maybe if, Gary can I ask you to pray for Pastor David and also for Lily Bed before we start, please?
If I'm regarding, I think you would see more things before. If we had just one mission here to kind of say, we're going to do it, just look up our study. We're going to talk about this, kind of the present, but I think this would seem as well. Just kind of get this, just enough to be, and you can impression, and then you go. Be especially in the past.
Thank you. So when Pastor David approached me, he said, "Well, you know, it's maybe a good thing that I can help him out tonight because we've got, we've already got kids in the teens." But what he did not know is that we had a bit of a rough week. So, you know, we're struggling to find a lot of the answers. So don't for one minute think that we've got any answers. In fact, if it was last week, we would have done much better than tonight. So, but the topic tonight, navigating the teen years. I'd like to start off from a personal point of view and something that I realized that is, with all these child-rearing books and, you know, some of the programs that you do get, is that one should always understand that it's not a quick fix. It's not a rigid sort of 101 to raise teens or to do this and then this would be the result. And I think Pastor David also mentioned that a couple of times. And I know with our first child, we, you know, we virtually do every course we could do in our church. And we, you know, we were just so excited and trying to raise this model child. And we just realized, and now more than ever, in having kids that's going in the teens, it just seems like nothing that we edited and trying to implement is working. And I understand we sort of going through a little bit of a rough patch at the moment. So, you know, maybe a bit more, our outlook is a bit more skeptic. But if one can take from all of these, especially on this, on all the different evenings, you can take something from it. You know, someday somehow, I believe that it will help and assist you in this task that God has given us. So let's, by starting off, we're looking at the potential of the teen years. Now, I was actually very surprised to see that, we all know that when you look at your kids and especially when they're going, you know, sort of mid-teens, they're very creative and they're very energetic and they come up with all these ideas. And many of these ideas actually of certain people, well-known people in the world, actually change the world. And I was very surprised to see that Louis Braille, that invented the Braille for deaf people, he was age 15 when he invented that. And that was quite astonishing for me to realize that, you know, obviously he had this idea and as a young teenager, I don't know how his parents responded to it, but, you know, sometimes you think, "Your child's got these ideas and, you know, it's just a phase or it's just something." And eventually, but it might, you know, there's a lot of potential and it might really take shape. Bill Gates was 19 years when he founded Microsoft, 19 years of age. So there are a lot of potential. I think you all agree with me that we, in our house, we've got two, a boy and a girl that's a teen at the moment. And each one has got different personalities and they've got different, their outlook is different and so also their potential. And I think that the important thing is for us as parents is to establish that relationship or actually the relationship should have been established some time ago so that you stay close, connected to your child to try and see and understand what truly is the potential that they possess. So the next slide on this heading of potential is that there's great potential for great faith. And one of the, one outstanding examples of that is of David. When you look, if you look in, on your notes, you can find 1 Samuel 16 verse 18. "Then answered one of the servants and said, 'Behold, I've seen a son of Jesse the Bethlehemite, that is cunning and playing, and a mighty, valiant man, and a man of war, and prudent in matters, and a comely person, and the Lord is with him.'" David said more over, and this is just a little bit further, in chapter 17. "The Lord that delivered me out of the paw of the lion and out of the paw of the bear, he will deliver me out of the hand of this Philistine. And soul said unto David, 'Go, and the Lord be with thee.'" So an example of a young boy with great faith. And sometimes the great thing about it is that these teens, obviously having a lack of experience in life, not seeing many disappointments in their life. And especially if they really come to the Lord and, you know, having a relationship with God, they all of a sudden just grab this faith and it's, and like the word says, it's a childlike faith. And we see this in David, in this example where he defeated Goliath, that, you know, sometimes we think, "Well, but it's the exuberance of youth." You know, he was actually too stupid to really think, "What is the consequences?" And we are like that, we think of the consequences, we think of, "Oh, but what if God does not deliver him?" But in that age, he had great faith. The second aspect of the potential, of great potential is that to have a keen purpose. And that we find in the example of Daniel. Can look in Daniel 1 verse 8. "But Daniel purposed in his heart that he would not defile himself with the portion of the king's meat, nor with the wine which he drank, before he requested of the prince of the Inox, that he might not defile himself." So, you know, when we look at teens, we think of responsible, you know, person, human beings. And I'm just looking at this example of Daniel and think that, but how is it that a young boy like Daniel had so much purpose and so much focus on what was right? And that is what he's gonna do, he's serving the Lord. Because once again, I put it in the perspective of my own children and I wonder, you know, will it ever happen? And it's not to say, it's not to be negative about it, but it's just to see that, you know, God can put that into a young person's heart, to have a keen purpose for him and for his will. Obviously, when we look at, you know, this teen years, it's not all but rosy and it's not always having, you know, these wonderful children that just doing everything right. And we need to look at the pitfalls of the teen years. And I think we, you know, not just even, I mean, many of you don't have teens at this stage, but you know of teens, we've all been there ourselves. So if you can remember, you know, what we were like at that stage in our lives, there are certainly some pitfalls that we as parents need to look out for. I just want to read this, 1 John 2 verse 14. "I have written unto you fathers, because ye have known him, that is, from the beginning. I have written unto you young men, because ye are strong, and the word of God abideth in you; and he have overcome the wicked one." Now, this particular verse to me is of great value because he says here, in the last part, he says, "And he have overcome the wicked one." And if I go back to the teen years of myself and my brother, I can also testify that I, you know, seeing the life of both him and myself, and my brother was involved in drugs. And I could see the work of the wicked one. I could see the evil, you know, the one at work and see how the enemy is trying to destroy a young life. Obviously in hindsight now, not so much at that stage in my life, but to see how the attack of the evil one is on, you know, to destroy a young person's life. And to see here that the word in 1 John 2:14 says, "That he has overcome the wicked one." And also given us great hope for me and Adriana to know that he's given us, that he will help us to overcome the wicked one. And God already, Jesus Christ, has overcome the wicked one when he rose from the dead. And we can enjoy that fellowship with him. So if we look at the first pitfall, it's, the first pitfall will be the lack of a real relationship with God. I'd like to draw your attention to 1 Chronicles 28:9. "And thou Solomon, my son, know thou the God of thy father, and serve him with a perfect heart and with a willing mind; for the Lord searcheth all hearts, and understandeth all the imaginations of the thoughts. If thou seek him, he will be found of thee; but if thou forsake him, he will cast thee off forever." And what's interesting to me on that part is, and in my brief just reading of this chapter this afternoon, I actually would like to go and read the whole story surrounding David, where he's handing over the kingship to Solomon. Because Solomon started off well, but somewhere down the line, he sort of stray, you know, he went off the path that his father actually was warning him about. Once again, a great example of a man, or in this situation, it was the child of David, who was a God-fearing man, a godly man, serving the Lord. But, you know, Solomon started off well, obviously by the inspiration of his father, but ended up not so well. And it's most probably because of, well, of a lack of a real relationship with God. Now, sometimes we can, our children can almost be caught up in being a Christian but based on the faith of the father and the mother. It's because, you know, we teach them, we're trying to teach them the Word, we read the Bible, we do Bible study, we come to church. And when they're out there on their own, that's actually when the real test comes. And that's one of the pitfalls that one should... So apart from obviously praying every day for your children to have a real relationship with God, it is wise to establish, encourage your children to have that personal relationship with God and make them aware that their relationship, their faith is not based on the faith of mommy and daddy. Another aspect of the pitfalls would be a lack of, sorry, lack of, we didn't, yeah, that's just a few percentages, just so that I can... In the book, he mentions that 75% of 13 to 17 years old claim to be Christian. That's again, an American statistic. Of that 75, 50% of those, that age group, actually practice their faith. So 50% of the 75%. And 50% of the 50% actually considered it to be important. So the numbers are against us. You know, we really have a tremendous task to raise children that will actually not just claim that they're Christian, but that they will also practice their faith. And I think, well, I know, we don't even begin to understand what peer pressure is in a school environment. I think the pressures of that is enormous. And for a teen to stand up among their peers for their faith is very difficult to do. And I think that is obviously what we need to strive for. But it's easier said than done. So if we look at the privileges of the, sorry, I missed one there, a lack, sorry. When it comes to the pitfalls of the teen years, we need to also make sure that there is clear boundaries set. If there's a lack of clear boundaries, then that also becomes a pit, a pitfall. Proverbs 4:1-2 says, "Yea, ye children, the instruction of a father, and attend to know, understand..." And, sorry, "and attend to know understanding; for I give you good doctrine, forsake ye not my law." Now, I think there's a fine boundary between being rigid and set boundaries, you know, boundaries in a strict way, be very conservative in your rules at home. But I really do think it's necessary. I think sometimes, especially what we find is that, obviously, as they grow up, they push these boundaries and they do it often and often and often. And then you're sort of slacking in that, you're sort of, you know, you think, "Is it really necessary?" Or maybe just for this once, I'll make an exception. And I think it's very important here to be consistent, that if the boundary is there, stay with it. You might doubt it, you know, further down the line, but at least for the, for some time, you know, stay with that until you feel that, well, that the child is within those boundaries is content. And then maybe make some changes to that. But this is where I think we've been challenged personally mostly, is those boundaries gets pushed and pushed and pushed and you're being slack on that and you give sort of, you know, you sit back or you, and it's hard work, let's face it. I mean, you're tired, we all, you know, I mean, all of us, you know, when you get home, then it's even more work at home than what it is at work. Because, you know, it's just, it's emotional and it's, you know, you just have to, in Afrikaans we say, "Je kierf je wijkers," you must just fend off, you know, it's just everywhere. And especially if you have three kids, you know, it's not that it gets more interesting. So, and the Lord gave us these doctrines and, as I said, you know, it's very simple to have these suggestions and ideas, but it's very difficult to implement them. But it's good to see that the Lord gives us his Word and he says that, "For I give you good doctrine, forsake ye not my law." And so it actually goes back to being faithful and being, not being, having unbelief. You know, to stand on these verses and to really believe that this is what God will do. Just before we go to the next, is there any comments or any suggestions that you might want to add on this, on this, what we've discussed up to now?
Well, yeah, okay, I'll say something. This was a terrible week for me and I was ready to actually give up. But when you read God's Word, you want to give up. That was absolutely terrible. And there's so many promises given me, so... And my children are only going to me, they're not mine, so it's a big loss. So I can just do the best I can do and it's up to them. So I feel at the moment I'm failing, but God's still in the role. So it's not me who's failing my child, it's my daddy's delay, when he wants to be taught. So I think I have to change my own mindset. But I'm not there yet, I'm almost there.
And just from my side as well, is that you're actually being challenged in your faith, your faith with the Lord. So, but do you actually believe that I can overcome evil, as you were saying that? You know, do you believe that I've given you this doctrine and if you seek me, you will find me? All those things you've been challenged with and saying, "Well, you know, you say you're a Christian, you say you serve me, but do you believe that I can actually..." Because that's the problem, we get despondent because we don't see that there's light at the end of the tunnel. But our hope is in Him. Okay, let's go to the next, the next point is the privileges of the teen years. 1 Corinthians 13:11. "When I was a child, I spoke as a child, I understand as a child, I thought as a child; but when I become a man, I put away childish things." In 1 Corinthians 13:11. And I think for some of you, do you have, you know, grown children? I know Hendrik has also got his daughter. And Adriana and myself said many times that it's actually, in that sense, that is a wonderful time, having children that, you know, they can, the discussions we have, for example, is interesting. You know, it's like you're speaking with another adult and you find their, you know, their point of views in certain matters and it really becomes actually fun. You know, it's totally different from those little ones. And that, to me, is one of the great advantages. And then, you know, be able to now start on a different level, interacting with them, training them in basically life skills, like for instance, financial development. You know, just the basics of how do you deal with money? You know, we all do obviously pocket money, you know, from a small age. But now, it gets different dimensions to dealing with money. And also to understand, you know, work. Obviously, the work has to justify the actual, the work needs to justify, you know, the remuneration that we give. But I find that they can now work a little bit longer and a little bit harder for money. But then realizing the value of that money. It's not easy now just to spend it quickly on something else. You know, now they think twice before they, because the work that they've put in to earn the money was, you know, was a lot harder than when they were just doing small little chores at home. Secondly, we can teach them personal responsibility. Personal responsibility, I find is also very different. We find that, I mean, I know you can't generalize by saying girls and boys are different, but we find that, you know, the girls on a much earlier age will be much more responsible than boys. And I know there are certain boys that's, you know, also as responsible on the same age as girls. But we just find that, that is, you know, the dynamics of our home, that there's a difference. And then obviously, we need to adapt, we need to adapt to, you know, you this old, there's a much bigger sense of responsibility as to pose you. You've got, still have to train a little bit more in that area. Little things, you know, something that I think that's very important is just, obviously, once again, the chores starting at a younger age, but consistency. I really think that's especially where myself and Adriana feel that we struggle a lot, is to be consistent. So if you make your bed in the morning, then you should make it every day. And we should look, make sure that you do it every day. We should not tell you that once or twice and then by the end of the week, everybody is tired and we forget about it. So it's our responsibility to make sure that they are, to keep those responsibilities. Simple things we have is like someone is responsible to feed the cat. Now, when you, when, it's interesting, when they're young, they do it quite often. But when they're now being teenagers, there's much more important things than, you know, looking after a cat. So, but also once again, we need to enforce that as parents. Thirdly, relational development as part of the privileges of the teen years. This to me is also actually starts at a, in the pre-teen years in the sense that you have to have a good relationship with your child to be able to help them with their relational development. You have to be on a good relationship with your son, with your daughter so that there's a discussion, that there's an openness. You know, I think that's what we're trying to do, is that you have, not as a friend to a friend, but, you know, there's not much that I would say that we hide, you know, from each other and we're trying to be on their level. So that when it comes now to the teen, 13 years, that they understand and you can understand what their situation amongst their peers are. Obviously, when it comes to relational development, you know, immediately you're thinking of, you know, how do they conduct themselves? Purity, purity is, you know, as for Christian parents, it's very important and for your child. So how do you, how do you convey that to your child in a way that is, that they can understand and accept it and actually implement it in their lives? Because again, they are being bombarded at the school, at different areas in their lives. They are bombarded with the opposite of purity. And it's again, that fight, it's, like I said, you're getting tired, but you have to watch out because your child, when they come home, well, you know, from school, you must understand many other, there was hundreds of other influences in the day. And so you just manage to neutralize and then tomorrow it starts over again. So purity is quite important. Obviously, one has to be on the level where your child is, that you can take them to the Word. Now, this becomes a bit more difficult because, you know, it's not all our children are saved. Now, this becomes a bit more difficult, because I, you know, it's not all our children are saved, number one, or number two. Not all our children actually have a relationship with God. You know, maybe not sure where, whether they're saved or not, but, so the, the child not actually. Already putting himself within the parameters of God's word. And the one and the other one is with, is outside, so one is within the parameters and one is without, so again, now how do you deal that? The, 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 it's difficult, you know, your approach is different, the approach for purity. It's easy to say to someone, well, this is what God's word teaches us, you have to be pure. But if you, if you have a child that's maybe at the, at that point in their life where they don't adhere to the words of God and it's not actually, they. They might confess that they're a Christian, but they're not. You actually need to go a step back and first, you know, make them aware of their sinfulness and their shortcomings to come to, to faith in, in Christ. And, and using a little bit of a deed to it. So that's why I'm saying the dynamics is so, you know, it's, 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 it's just, it varies so, so much that. Every child is different, every approach is different, and every day we just need the, the wisdom and the knowledge of God to help us in that. In that task that we have. Um, also part of relational development will be to have a. Positive influence, um, in your child's life. Uh, I just wanted to, to, if, if you look in your notes, Ephesians four twenty-nine, let no corrupt communication proceed of your mouth. But that which is good to the, to use, to the use of edifying, that it may minister grace unto the hearers. So when we talk about relational de- development, we need to influence our children positively. We need to, um, connect with them on a level where they have the liberty to discuss certain things with you, especially in their relationships. To when they can share, I know the ladies, Adriana has got that already with, with one of our daughters, that. She's, she has the liberty to come and discuss heartaches and relational issues with her. Which, um, is, uh, is a great blessing, because if there's a barrier, then you've got no chance. So, and if, if you have that barrier, obviously, the, the aim would be to, to try and break that barrier down first. And then, um, you know, have that possi- that influence. The last as- aspect. Is preparation for dating. So as, as a father with two, two daughters, I don't know. Um, you know, you think of this and you, you, your hair starts raising on, on your, the back of your neck, um. I think I did mention and touch on that aspect, stay involved, um. If you, if you, it's so important to have that relationship with your child, to have that, that almost friend, friendship-like relationship that you can. Have almost firsthand information. And not to abuse that information and to, 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 you know, punish or. Set boundaries that will restrict them, because that will just damage that relationship, but use that information, um, wisely. Ephesians six four, and ye fathers provoke not your children to wrath, but bring them up in the nurture and admonition of the Lord. Again, as I said, you know, it's about that balance, being a friend, but also set the, the ground rules. So as, as in everything in life, there's always that balance. One Corinthians ten thirty-one, whether therefore ye eat or drink, or whatsoever ye do, do all to the glory of God. So we, um. Obviously, again, age appropriate. There's, there's a lot of books, there's actually a lot of, um, a, a lot of division in, when it comes to the, the aspect of dating in Christian. Uh, communities, some people would say no dating at all, you know, until. Until you're married, for that matter, um, others would say no at this age or that age. Um, so there's, there's quite a lot of debate and different opinions on that. I don't know what your thoughts are. I know you don't think that far already, but have you thought about it?
Uh, age thirty-two. It will depend on the child, so you know, one, this is the dating age, right, it depends on. How mature is this child, who is this person they want to date with? What does dating look like, all by yourself in a car somewhere or going to the mall with, you know? It is difficult, because they will ask you, someone they had, they did.
They did, of course.
Somebody asked you that, you must have been. That, that, that one, and, though, I know that one, that one, it was like, that depends on. And mom and parents always say, you, you don't really have this with dating until you consider marriage. If you're not able to carry it, then you never begin, just be quiet.
And you were happy with that? Yeah, I think dating, that's like you were saying, the, 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 the concept of dating needs to be defined. When, when we talk about setting the, the, you know, clear boundaries, one has to say, well, this is in our, in our house, this is what dating means. Dating means that, you know, you're going with your parents or with, with friends to, to a movie and, and that's it, yeah. So, um. And you were rightly also say, you, you'll know your child, you know, you know where, where to be, you know, what boundaries, what rules to set. And what not to set. Um, again, it's so important to, to have a good understanding of, of your child's relationships. I'm just going through on the, on, um, when we're looking at setting the ground rules. Prayer and counsel, but, um, Proverbs eleven fourteen, but in the multitude of counselors, there is safety. Outside friendships, time with the other family, expressing love, purity and patience. So the one thing that you've, that we find that we always, you know, you, you, you feel overwhelmed. You feel overwhelmed if you think of, I must teach my child, child to be pure, I need to, you know, to be this, make sure his relationships are, are healthy. And all these things are just sometimes too much. And I think one always needs to go back to the basic and I, and it's basically advice for myself and us now, is just trust the Lord. Do what you can do. And know that you're doing it a good, as for the Lord. And there's an aspect of the Lord's sovereignty where he will do, he will do a work in your child's heart as well. Where, you know, he will also bring that maturity, bring the responsibilities, because at the end of the day, we can only do so much. We, you, you cannot force. Responsibility into a child's mind or in his, in his heart, that's something that has to come within. And as I say, I think that is. For me, the way forward is to, to, to trust the Lord, keep on praying diligently. For, for all your children, for every aspect of their life, do what you can do and the Lord will do the rest. Okay, anything else? Yeah. Yeah, I think, and, and as I say, it's a, it's not a, it's not a physical thing, it's an emotional drainage, it's. You're constantly fighting emotionally and that is, that is very drainage, it, it does drain a person a lot. Clive, would you mind placing for us in prayer?
Sure. For me, I can hardly imagine the time. We thank you that you have made provision, your orders. Teach our children to train, to grow. For I pray that you may apply your teachings and the words to their struggle. And everything with you to your strength. Your presence in the name.
Thank you, everybody.